Hey, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 21st, 2022 council meeting. We've already convened the meeting and came out of executive session a little while ago. And we're going to roll wide into the meeting. And actually, one of the things we always like to start with, any meeting, is swearing in some of our new commission members. In this case, I see that we've got Gary Zerinsky, and we've got Brian Roguski. And we actually have Scott Osterholm here with me. And so I'm going to come down, and we're going to have Gary and Brian mic on. And you guys will all do some repeating after me. So let's move to the next section. All right, Scott, you can come on up. All right. So is this good for us? Lacy?
Yes.
All right, great. All right. I think I heard Gary laughing there. So good to see. And Gary, Brian, just so you know, we've got the official documents that we'll have you sign. All right. So what we like to do?
This is the mic that we...
After me, we'll see how this works. I solemnly affirm...
I solemnly swear.
Okay. That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States...
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the state of Ohio...
And the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects...
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter...
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And the ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs...
And the ordinances of the Village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of...
And this would be Planning Commission.
Planning Commission alternate.
All right. And Brian, also Planning Commission alternate. Gary, Planning Commission full member. And with that, Scott, thanks for coming in. Gary and Brian, good to have you sworn in as well. And thank you, guys.
Is this me?
Yeah. And Scott, I will give you, this is yours to sign.
Okay.
All right. So thanks, everyone. Okay. And I do not believe, we do not have Cheryl Durgens on, is that right?
Correct. She's in the meeting.
Okay, good. All right. So but I will say that Cheryl is also re-upping for the Public Arts and Culture Commission. And we're really excited to have Cheryl Durgens in the mix. She's added so much value. And, you know, again, it's great to have really active, engaged members for the Planning Commission. So with that, we are going to move into announcements. And Hostway, do you have any announcements? Okay, well, actually...
We have a big one, Dave.
Yes, yeah, we've got some more, lots of excitement today. I do have a few announcements. And ironically, many of those announcements were on my list for the last meeting, which, I'm sorry, I was not able to be here. But first of all, I want to give a shout out to Hostway, belated birthday. Unfortunately, Hostway's birthday on March 7th was a little bit more traumatic than we would have liked. Sorry about that, Hostway. But we want to celebrate you, and thanks for all you do for the village. Also, yeah, I wanted to highlight that April 23rd is Celebrate Trails Day. And my understanding is the village is looking at an event like we used to do when it was formally opening day for trails. We're hoping to, again, get our Yellow Springs Police Department out there, along with Miami Township Fire and Rescue. I know the brewery is doing some kind of collab with 50 West. And so I expect that it will be a great spring day to celebrate our trail. And we also have a special person to honor on that day, which I know Mary Ann and I have talked about. So, yeah, so mark the date. It's the last, well, it's almost the last Saturday of April, April 23rd. Also, I wanted to mention, I think everyone knows by now that Yellow Springs is in the final four for the Strongest Town Competition. I was just interviewed earlier today, and there will be a podcast that will kick off the next round of voting on Monday, March 28th. We are up against Jasper, Indiana, and hoping to make it to the final round. I want to emphasize that this contest is very different from a lot of the recognition that Yellow Springs has gotten in the past. This is not about being the coolest town or the funkiest town. This is about resiliency. And so the reason why we are in the mix is all about our almost, you know, almost entire renewable energy portfolio, our broadband, municipal broadband initiatives, our work on affordability, our social justice work. There are a variety of things that this Strongest Town Award is recognizing. And it really is about representing some of those progressive things that strong communities need to look at. So look out for that podcast. And regardless, make sure to continue to support Yellow Springs because we are really a model for resiliency, and we see that now more than ever. Also wanted to highlight, oh, actually, just a shout out to the Springs Motel being open again. So it's great to have the Knickerbockers running that show. And I think that's going to add a lot of value to the things that are happening on the south side of town. Also, Kevin Stokes, excellent job at the last meeting. I got to watch that meeting, and I really thought you did a nice job of running the show. Great conversations. Thank you so much. And last thing, I just want to give a heads up. Kevin and I have been talking with Hostway about how we want to look at some community conversations and listening sessions around how we really kind of come back together as a village. I think there's been a lot of divisiveness lately, and all of council and your local government are sensitive to that. And we've had some outreach from some folks that grew up in Yellow Springs and do some of this work around facilitating these conversations. And so there will be more information about that soon. But I think a process where we come back together and remember how all this work takes a village is going to be really important. So that's what I've got today. I see that Mary Ann has her hand up. Mary Ann?
Yeah, Brian, thank you. I was going to wait until you mentioned about the Trails Day. I wanted to... On Saturday, we will be having... So the Habitat team, the... We'll be having an event at the fire station with lots of tables and information and plans. And so I'm hopeful, Brian, let's talk about how we can sort of collaborate with the Trails and the Earth Day and have it be one event that happens in different places.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Mary Ann. And I will say, in the past, the Glenn and Combs Land Trust and other groups have been involved in the Trail celebration, so it'd be nice to bring that all together. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. So I think then we're going to move into our consent agenda, which, my understanding is the minutes from our last meeting. But Hostway, did you send an email that suggested something else is on the consent agenda, or am I making that up?
I don't think we have anything else. Judy, is there anything else we needed to add?
No.
Okay. Great. So we're looking at the minutes from the March 7th meeting. And can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We approve the consent agenda.
Okay. So I heard Mary Ann and Kevin in first and second modes. And Judy, if you could call the roll, please?
Yes, Brown. Yes. McQueen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
And Houche?
Yeah, I will say yes. I know I didn't attend the meeting, but I did watch and read the minutes, so yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And I didn't attend either, but I watched and read the minutes.
Right. Next up is a review of the agenda. Anything we need to add, take away, or modify?
Brian?
Yes.
There's one thing that I would like to have staff talk about, maybe during the manager's report. That's the letter in our packet about King Street. I know that King Street, or I mean Fairfield Pike, I take that very seriously. And so I'd like to have a little time, probably during the manager's report. Thanks.
Great. We'll do that. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add discussion of the documents submitted to the packet at the last meeting that wasn't discussed, the resolution rescinding Resolution 202149.
So why don't we put that under new business? And so I guess that's a discussion about rescinding that resolution.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. Then I think, Kevin Stokes, I'm going to hand it over to you for petitions and communications.
Great, Brian, thank you. And thank you again for those kind words. The clerk has received and will file a letter from Judith Hemfling regarding support for Houche, a letter from Peggy Copenek regarding monetary support for Ukraine, Kate Levesque, sorry if I butchered her name, Kate, regarding a request for wastewater COVID monitoring, Diane Chinister with a letter in support of Houche, Esther Levek regarding a request for a stop sign at King and Fairfield, Heather Horton regarding a complaint against Houche, Interchief Burge regarding a compliment to Corporal Bean, and Marshall Walgren with a Zoom, discussing a Zoom option for meetings. And that is all I have on petitions and communications. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. All right, we're going to move right into legislation. And first up is ordinance, and this is the second reading of that, 202207. And Judy, we can do that by title only.
All right, brace yourselves, it's lengthy. This is granting and granting consent to the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation Authority to apply maintenance and repair standard longitudinal pavement markings and erect regulatory and warning signs on state highways inside village corporate limits, and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to remove snow and ice and use snow and ice control material on state highways inside the village corporation limits, and giving consent of the village for the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform maintenance and/or repair on state highways inside the village corporations.
All right. Can I get a motion?
移到
Second.
Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, since this is a second reading. And Hostway, is this one that you want to sort of give us a brief on?
Yes, Brian, and I think Judy did a great job on the presentation. That is the presentation, as she read it.
Yeah. All right. So, yeah, I guess then, yeah, good enough. I mean, the bottom line here is that we have a state highway that runs through town. We want ODOT to maintain it so that we don't have additional taxpayer expense to do that. And I don't know, are there any questions or comments from council or citizens? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so let's go ahead and close the public hearing. And Judy, if you could call the roll, please?
Yes, Stokes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have emergency reading of ordinance 202208. And Judy, we can do that by title only as well.
All right, this is amending the personnel policy manual by approving a position description and declaring emergency.
All right, can I get a motion?
移到
Second.
All right, great. And since this is an emergency reading, I'm going to open a public hearing because we'll be taking one vote on this. And Hostway, is this yours again to kind of highlight what we're doing? Okay.
Yes, this is me. And I'll reference past conversations about finding the right balance for some positions to be exempt and others to be non-exempt classified. And I'll, but first I'll start with what is it that we, what is it that we're facing right now? What's the challenge? Nathan Lee will be leaving us, and I miss her already. She and her family are moving to Tennessee. So that will create an opening in the accounting and payroll position. So we want to make that a manager position. It does meet all the fair labor standards to be an exempt position, a salary position. We think by making it, I believe that by making it a salary position, it would better suit the needs of the village, will be a bit more competitive in our recruitment. So for those reasons, we're looking for council for authorization for us to move forward and hire for this position as a salary position versus what it currently is, which is a classified hourly position. A little bit more on the context of some of the changes we've made in the administrative personnel. If you recall, I think about two years ago, when Susie retired from the government, we made some changes to the structure of those positions. We had two clerks, utility clerks, and accounts payable and paper clerk. We transitioned to balance some of the load and change some of the processes so that we could do the work with one accounting and payroll clerk, one full-time utility clerk, and another part-time utility clerk versus the two utility clerks plus a part-time. So we've been able to reduce costs and streamline some of the operations with how we're staffing that department. And this, I feel, will be an improvement in how we're staffing that department. From a cost basis, I do not see this having a change in the finances of the village. So I would expect this to be a, there would not to be any cost difference in the position. I think Matt has joined, and I don't know if Matt wants to weigh in, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, great. Matt, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Matt, you're...
Yeah, you're muted, Matt.
Sorry. No, we just want to take a moment to say thank you to Nancy Hutchins for her service to the village. For those of us in the office, she's been a tremendous help, and we're, you know, we're just really thankful for her time with the village, and we really appreciate that. And again, just to echo what Hostway was saying, we just see this more as an exempt position and a managerial role.
And one more thing I would add, council, is that we have run this through legal and HR, and it does meet fair labor standards and all the legal requirements to make it an exempt position. I don't know, Brianna, if there's anything you want to say to that.
Okay.
Nothing to add.
All right, thanks, Brianna. Thanks, Hostway. Thanks, Matt. Any questions or comments from council members? Then I think we can go ahead and close the public hearing. And Judy, if you want to call the roll?
Yes, McQueen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Houche?
Yes.
You?
Okay. Next up is the first reading of ordinance 202209, and Judy will do that by title only as well.
All right, this is adopting a body worn camera use policy for the Village of Yellow Springs.
All right, can I get a motion?
移到
Second.
All right. So I know that we have Ellis Jacobs here to give us some details about the process. Hostway, do you want to say anything briefly before Ellis gets on the mic?
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'll start off with one, you know, you guys know that we are doers here in this administration. We get things done, and when we see opportunities for funding and any improvements, we jump on them. This is one of those instances where us in our pursuit to improve the efficiency, transparency, and accountability of government, we missed a step and we ruffled some feathers. And I'm glad that Ellis and I could get back in alignment and find a path forward. And I'm just really proud of the work that Ellis and Paige have done on this body worn camera and the team. There's several other folks that were part of this collaboration. We had John Chappell, we had John Hemflin and Bomani. So a really good, active group of citizens and administrative staff worked on this over a four-month period. And I'm just amazed of what we've put together, and I think we're making a new standard. So Ellis and Paige, I'll hand it over to you.
All right.
Paige, do you want to speak first?
Yeah, sure. I'll just reiterate my thanks to the team. This is a perfect example of citizens and police coming together to come to a common goal, right? We both wanted the same things, we just needed to get there, and we got there together. So thank you all for the hard work that you put in. I think we've submitted an application to council here that meets all the criteria of the current surveillance use application. And I think you'll find it has all the information you need to hopefully make a decision. And I'll let Ellis speak to it. He did quite a bit of the work, so Ellis, please.
All right, Ellis.
Yeah, here I go. Sorry, you know, wouldn't you know it, my, this is not the first Zoom meeting I've been at today, so I had decided it was for managers. I think I correct on that. My apologies to everybody. Let me first say, I want to thank Hostway and our acting chief, Paige, for inviting me and the rest of the people in this whole Citizens Committee to get involved in the process of writing this policy. It was a really good process. We had great people at the table, and I think everybody got hurt, and we ended up with a really good product as a result. So thanks to Hostway and Paige. We were also joined by Florence Randolph, Joan Chappell, John Hemfling, and Bomani Murienda. And as I said, everybody came together and brought their thoughts and opinions on how to do this. Turned out good. So let me just say, you know, the reason people want to have their officers having body cameras is because people view them as an important tool for accountability and transparency. And they can be, but only if you got the right policy in place. If you have the wrong policy in place, if the cameras aren't on when they should be on, or people can't access the footage when they need to access the footage, they don't really do much for it. And so what our process was, is we looked around the country and gathered up what we thought were the best policies in the country. And then we looked at some of the model policies that are out there. The model policy that the State of Ohio Police Academy, if you will, uses, the ACL News Model Policy. And we tried to draw the best from all these various policies that we could find to come up with something that really, I think, moves Yellow, would move Yellow Springs to the sort of forefront of how these, how this technology is used in a productive, useful fashion. So I think we've adopted the policy, and I'll talk about it in a second, that increases and amplifies the use of this technology for accountability while at the same time protecting the privacy of folks in the community, which is the, those are the two sort of countervailing things that you have to weigh when you're thinking about this kind of thing. So let me just tell you the particular features of the draft that is in front of you. And I'm going to mention these things because these are the things that don't show up in every policy that you see around the country. These are the things that I think are of particular value. First, our officers will, as soon as they're able to, notify somebody that they're being recorded, if in fact the interaction is being recorded. So people will know. And that's very important for people's privacy. Now, they're mandated to turn on their cameras for all law enforcement and investigatory contacts. And that's typical. That's typically the language you see. And then we give some examples of that. In this policy, we also give the citizen the right to ask the officer to turn it on, and then the officer must turn it on. So if the citizen, if there's some just innocuous interaction between a citizen and an officer, that in that situation, the officer would not be required to turn it on. But if the citizen thought, this isn't going quite right, the citizen can ask the officer to turn it on, and the officer should. All these cameras will be operated in a 60-second buffer mode for video and audio. Let me explain what that means. The cameras are sort of always on, but they're not always recording. They're actually only recording 60 seconds. So when the officer presses on, it starts recording, but it had already recorded the 60 seconds before. And so that's that 60-second buffer. And that's a critical time period, if you think about it, to capture. I noticed, for instance, the city of Dayton says buffer mode, 60 seconds, but only for the video. Our policy says video and audio. I think that's actually quite important. The citizens, a citizen can ask an officer to cease recording, again, for privacy purposes, but only under certain limited situations and where the request to cease recording is in fact captured on the recording. So we shouldn't have a situation where the officer says, well, they asked me to turn it off, and this way I turned it off, and the citizen said, well, no, I didn't. The citizen's going to ask, it needs to be caught on the recording for the officer to do it. Now, the officer gets some discretion in deciding whether, in fact, he or she thinks it's appropriate to turn it off. But, and the limited situations are situations where people have an expectation of privacy at their house, in our hospital room, et cetera. So limited situations where the request is captured, a citizen can ask to have it turned off for privacy purposes. See what else we've got. They can't be used to gather intelligence on First Amendment activities, nor can they be used with facial recognition technology. And that's quite important. It says to an officer, no, you can't turn your body camera on and go take a tour around that demonstration downtown and come home with video of everybody that was at the demonstration. So that would not be allowed. And that, again, is something that you don't see showing up in all the policies in the country. They, the videos will be retained for 180 days and then destroyed, except if there's a use of force incident or a complaint, in which case they will automatically be kept for at least three years. And in any instance, any subject of a video can request the video to be kept for at least three years. Again, making them useful for the purposes that they need to, they might need to be used for into the future. A question that has come up in other instances is, so how do you get these videos, and will the videos be available when they're needed? In public records law, there are things that must be released, and there are things that are allowed to be released. And the allowed category is greater than the must-be-released category. Many policies say you only got to release the stuff that must be released. We adopted a draft that says if it can be released, if it's allowed to be released, we're going to release it. And in fact, if there's a use of force or something, we will expedite the release of that. And people should have it within five days unless there's, you know, an overriding reason why they can't get it quickly. And then finally, if there's a use of force incident or a complaint has been filed, the officer involved in that incident will not be allowed to view the video before writing their initial report of the incident. In situations like that, it's really important that we get the officer's unvarnished perceptions and observations before they view the video. and observations before they view the video. And then, of course, their supervisor can view the video to try to figure out, you know, whether the officer's report coincides with what the video shows. So these are all really important protections that increase the transparency of this technology, the transparency uses of this technology, and I think, in fact, actually increase citizens' privacy protections when this technology is being used. All of it, I think, comes together in a pretty strong package. And as I said, it comes out of a really good group process, with everybody contributing, a lot of good viewpoints, and everybody at the table, the chief, Host Way, our solicitor, being really willing to listen and incorporate the good ideas.
All right, thank you very much, Ellis. And yeah, I want to reiterate the thanks to you and the citizens who are involved. And I really appreciate that interim chief Paige and also Host Way were so actively involved. I was able to listen in a little bit on a couple of the meetings in the process, and I was very impressed. So do we have any questions or comments from council members?
Yes, Brian.
Yep, Kevin.
Kevin here, I'd like to say a few words. First of all, a great deal of thanks to the entire team that worked on this. As Host Way alluded to, there were some ruffled feathers at one point, and I was excited when we had the funding opportunity in the past, but it's important to do things the right way. Now, I appreciate Ellis and the team stepping up and reminding us of the need for the policy before going forward with attempting to acquire those funds. So it's always good to have, again, somebody as part of your team that's there to keep you honest. And where there is value in a preview for a movie or another entertainment event that really gets you excited about the big show, Ellis called me last week and gave me a preview, and it made me so excited to read this policy that I really enjoyed reading it. You know, I will submit that this is probably only the second time I've said how much I've enjoyed reading, you know, either a piece of legislation or a policy, part of a policy manual. But because Ellis had done such a great job in laying down the framework for what the expectation should be, and the team just did a fantastic job, it's, you know, I would submit that it's air tight. I mean, it's a very good policy. I mean, I don't have any other policy to compare with regarding body-worn cameras, but I feel very much informed and very much engaged because of the way this thing was presented. And kudos to the team, and I look forward to whenever the funding opportunities come around again, to stepping up and making a presentation. So once again, thank you, thank you, thank you to the team for doing this work.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Mary Ann?
Yeah, wow, yeah, I read the whole thing. I can't say that I found it that enjoyable of experience, but I'm glad that you did, Kevin. And things are getting, so it seems like we just keep piling one technical thing on to another, and more and more things that our officers are having to wear. At any rate, a question. How is, how are we going to educate the community about their rights in this regard? So in other words, if a citizen didn't know that he or she could ask the officer to turn off the camera, they would be unlikely to do so, probably.
All right, great question. Host Way?
We're counting on...
Give me Host Way, I think, just for the record, okay. Ellis was able to unmute, I saw him reaching forward to make sure he was able to unmute, okay?
Go ahead, Host Way.
Oh, I was going to say that, you know, we'll have it on our website, and we're counting on the newspaper and, you know, the very vocal people in Yellow Springs to inform others of their rights and what's possible. So I don't, I think that given where a lot of our citizens are and how they're watching the progress and the improvements that we have made in the police department, I think this is one of the elements that a lot of folks are watching out for. In addition to the material we're going to put out, we are going to make some notation on the uniforms when a camera is on, so folks would know that there's a recording taking place. So we'll find a way that that's very obvious and visible to the individual that's interacting with our police officers. So that's going to hopefully improve that communication, exchange of information.
Okay. Ellis, did you want to add something to that, or?
No.
Good.
That sounds right.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is a good time to highlight, you know, body-worn cameras were one of the recommendations that have come forward from our justice system task force. Also, when we had the justice system collaborative committee, that was an initiative that's continued. And so I do want to, you know, emphasize that this has been something that council has gotten the indication that's important for citizens. I appreciate that we are balancing this with our surveillance policy, which, you know, is why we've gone through a really, I think, healthy process in looking at how to balance those interests. But this is definitely something that's been talked about for at least four years. And then, of course, the next step is going to be, you know, if we approve the policy, how do we fund that technology? Do we have any other questions or comments from council members?
I have a comment.
Yes, Lisa.
I want to reiterate, thank you to the team that worked on this. You know, it's always great when a group process works well. I think there's two things for me that really stood out. One was the policy that you just discussed about a person being able to ask for a recording. And I also was very interested in the way that when the camera's turned on, it captures back. You know, because often that signaling event that would have a person say, gee, we better be recording this, has already happened. So I think that's a really, really good feature. I appreciate that, the description of using some of the model policies as well as best practices elsewhere, and I know that takes extra work. So thank you to the team, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Carmen, anything else you want to ask or comment on?
So I got the opportunity to speak with Ellis a couple of days ago, and one of the things that was really, one of the things that stood out to me was that feature where a community member, someone who's having an interaction with a police officer, has agency over what happens next because they can say, hey, turn the camera on. That is, you know, as far as I've been able to discern from the little bit of research that I've done regarding, you know, body-worn cameras, that's a, that's kind of a big deal. And I just appreciate all the work that everyone's done to make that a part of the policy.
All right, thanks, Carmen. Do we have any questions or comments from citizens?
Yeah, Brian, yeah, maybe, I look, I see John Hemfling, and I'm wondering also if Joan or Bomani are here and they want to say something as well.
Okay, yeah, John, go ahead.
Brian, I can help with the meeting and unmeeting.
Okay, thanks.
Can you hear us?
Hey, John.
Yeah, hi. So, thanks, everyone, I'm John Hemfling. So an issue or a situation in which some departments, I believe, have rejected requests for recordings is where the recording pertains to an investigation in which a person has not yet been charged. The Public Records Act does, you know, allow excluding confidential law enforcement records that would lead to the disclosure of the identity of a suspect who's not yet been charged. I was just wondering if you are the, if the requister is the person who's not yet been charged, and that the interaction is sort of the, the recording is basically of the incident about which they're under investigation, is that a situation in which the village would be required to release the recording? Or would they be able to withhold it? Since, you know, I think that that would be one of the more common use cases, or one of the more common situations, I imagine, where people might want to request the recording. I guess my question's for Brian, sorry.
That's the lawyer's answer always. If they have not been charged and they are subsequently charged, the requesting of a record through the public records process, even though they become a criminal defendant, triggers the discovery rule, and then we have to let the prosecutor's office know that it has been disclosed pursuant to the public records law prior to the discovery obligation through the, you know, criminal justice system.
Okay. Thanks, Brian, thanks, John. I see that, I guess, maybe it's Athena Fannin has her hand up?
Hi, yeah, I wish I had something specific to say about the policy. I just want to go ahead and encourage you guys to lean towards transparency the most. And I do appreciate that you guys are also working on the privacy issue because, sorry, it's hard for me to talk, because there is, my biggest concern is always abuse by the more powerful positions to the less powerful. And I think that that can cause some complicated situations where you're trying to protect somebody, but also you're trying to be transparent. And what I'm hearing is that the committee has done some really excellent work, so I just want to continue to encourage that.
All right, thanks, Athena, I appreciate that. Any other questions or comments before we wrap this first reading up? And remember, we will have a second reading at our next meeting. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands up. So Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll on this first reading, even though we know that we've got another reading coming up.
Or Krieger. Yeah. Stokes?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
House?
Yes. All right. Thank you, everyone, and we'll be bringing this back at the next meeting. All right, we're going to move into Resolution 2022-17. Judy will do that by title only.
This is authorizing the village manager to execute the grant award for $100,000 from Green County Board of Commissioners on behalf of Antioch College.
All right, can I get a motion?
I made that motion, or seconded.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. And Host Way, you want to tell us briefly what this one's about?
Yes, and we needed to bring this back to council. It was discussed and voted on at the last council meeting, but due to a recusal, we needed to bring it back to council. So in short, we worked diligently to secure monies of financial support for Antioch in their pursuit to demolish the Union Building. This is a building that has been considered for demolition for many years now, a long time. And we're glad that we could help in whatever we could. I see part of my job is not just to help secure funding for our organization, but also entities in our community that have goals. And this is, this is one of the, one of the goals or one of the projects that is specifically aligned with revitalization, revitalization of village assets and entities. And I know that council's been supportive of these efforts.
Yeah, and it certainly does underscore that it takes a village. I will say that, you know, the demolition money that came up with the county, we didn't originally, you know, have a local government, you know, public land kind of project. So it was great that Antioch College came forward. All right, any questions or comments from council? All right, Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll then.
All right, McQueen?
Yes, and thanks.
Yeah. Brown?
Yes.
Stokes?
I understand.
Thank you, House?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Resolution 2022-18. Again, we can do that by title only, Judy.
All right, this is designating Judy Kinnear as village council's designated to receive public records training on behalf of each of the elected officials pursuant to, and in accordance with the Fire戒律法 Section 109.43b and 149.43e1.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right. Judy, why don't you tell us what this housekeeping item is about?
It's really the built-in suspenders approach. Most of you do take public records training, but the auditor requires to see evidence of each individual's training for public records. So this is, just backs us up. If we don't happen to get a certificate, or someone was a little late to take their training, I've got it for you in case you miss a training or lose a certificate or something of that nature.
Okay, thanks, Judy. And, you know, I think one of the things is, as Judy said, all council members go through Sunshine and public records training. And certainly, if there are any major changes in those policies, then Judy keeps us updated. And there's not a whole lot that I think changes in that area. Public records policies are pretty, pretty well-defined. All right, so any questions or comments from council?
Kevin here, wanted to speak over the stalling or whatever, I don't know what it is, but I just want to thank Judy for taking one for the team. We appreciate you doing that.
Yeah. Well, it doesn't, it doesn't let us off the hook, but Judy definitely keeps us updated. All right, well, let's go ahead then and call the roll on this one, Judy.
All right, Brown?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yeah.
House?
Yes. Okay. Next up is Resolution 2022-19, and Judy, we can do that by title only.
This is accepting a settlement with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission.
All right, can I get a motion?
移動
Second.
All right. Briann, are you kicking this off? Or Host Way?
I'll start off, I'll start off with...
Who's kicking it off?
Yeah, we're giving you context, and I'll let Briann take over the legal aspect of this.
Okay.
First, I'd like to start that this settlement with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission stems from issues prior to me being village manager. I think that as village manager, I've done a good job at avoiding some of these conflicts that were part of this investigation and being sensitive to a lot of the workplace culture and moving our organization forward. So this particular issue is from an incident, or a series of incidents that happened prior to 2018. And we, when I came on, when I came on board, this, the legal battle, if you will, had just started, and I've been added to protect the interest of the village, protect our reputation, and prevent, reduce our liabilities. So I'm glad that we have secured the agreement that we have. And I strongly believe that if we were to continue our legal fight, we would, we would end up in a better position. But I think that we also need to be fair. And I acknowledge that there were things said and done that I think that they could have been better handled. And so I've agreed with the legal team that this is, this settlement is, it's a good agreement. It allows us to reduce our liabilities, meaning that we are not having a payout. But it does also, we are also accepting and recognizing that some things were not done right. And we're accepting responsibility for that. I am accepting to go to cultural sensitivity and anti-discrimination training on behalf of the organization. Now, I wouldn't engage in that kind of behavior, but as the village manager, I am the chief executive, and it falls on my responsibility to carry out what we accept in as a settlement. Additionally, we have to make some changes to our personnel manual to reflect anti-discrimination language in our personnel manual, and we will do so, and that's the substance of agreement. I would like to say also to past employees that, you know, while I was not here, I apologize for any inconvenience that they've felt and suffered or endured during the time. And for future teams, or, sorry... And for future teams, or sorry, current employees, I aspire to lead a better organization. Breann?
I can't, I can't put a cherry on that. That's perfect. We don't have a monetary settlement, but the unfortunate part of this is we will have to expend some funds because OCRCC is not back to in-person trainings yet. So in order to meet the timeline, what's critical is that we do get the training for supervisors scheduled. We do have a first quarter review and personal policy manual that we've already discussed repeatedly. So whatever language OCRCC says needs to be in our policy manual, I don't know that it will be much because the problem and the reason this complaint was generated and what OCRCC found was that the prior village manager did not follow what was in the personnel policy manual that was enacted in 2014. So that's where we ran into a problem. Other than that, you know, scheduling the training with a contractor, not just OCRCC, we don't have any funds that will be wrapped up in this. This was handled by our outside carrier through Proso. So Proso's recommendation is to accept the cease and desist order and comply with it, as is mine.
So it seems like maybe two things to clarify. So, you know, for the most part, the village, it was not established that the village violated two of the allegations. So maybe we can just be a little bit more specific about what exactly the issue was?
Providing a negative reference.
Okay. And so, and, and that was, I guess, done by a staff member?
That was the former village manager that did that.
Okay. And then the second thing is, can we clarify the scope of the training? Because I think anti-racism training is, is a great thing for the village to do. Who will be involved in that?
It has to be specific to Ohio's anti-discrimination law. OCRCC has to approve the actual agenda.
Okay. But who's, who will be participating in that training?
At this point, every supervisor should.
Okay. And does that include council?
From my perspective, it would. Because you supervise the clerk, the village manager, and me.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Carmen?
Yeah, sorry. I was trying to raise my hand, but I, so when, what's the timeline for completing this anti-discrimination or anti-racism or sensitivity training or whatever everyone wants to call it? What's the timeline for that?
We don't have a firm timeline yet. We basically have to get it done by the end of the year.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Then Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll.
All right. Krieger?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Our next resolution is 2022-20. And Judy, we can read that by title only.
This is approving replat of CBE lots for submission to Green County.
All right, can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Hosway?
Thank you. As you know, we're, we're working hard at expanding the income tax base for the village and attracting more business. Part of that economic development strategy is to improve the marketability of the CBE property. So we've been working with Cresco on their business expansion. The subdivision of this plat will allow us and Cresco to, to support their expansion as agreed by council in a previous resolution. So this allows us to parcel off the acreage that we agreed to as part of the economic development strategy.
All right. Yeah, very exciting to hear that Cresco is expanding more local jobs that pay well, not to mention doing an important service for society. Are there any questions or comments from council members? Mary Ann?
Yeah.
And then Kevin?
Yeah.
Hosway, is it possible to show what the additional property is? I couldn't tell from that site plan what, what was being added to there.
And by the way, that was going to be my same request, just if you could just show that diagram, the Exhibit A, and then point things out if you could.
Okay, absolutely. So I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen. But first, let me put this on full screen mode. Okay. And I will share my screen. All right, so when you're looking at, this is the, this is the subdivision. So we're looking at this lot here that is being parcel off. So currently, the village owns this lot and this lot. The expansion for Cresco includes expanding two additional buildings to the, to the west of the property. And part of that expansion is happening on current property, on property they currently own. Future expansion is, will be in this lot. So we are parceling off this lot here. And we will retain, retain these 15 acres that are here.
Where is their current facility?
Their current facility ends right here in this solid line here. That's where their property line ends. And this is ours, and this is what we would be working with Cresco for their expansion. Now, this is a difficult document to see.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Kevin, did you have any other questions or that was just, that was the one?
Just one, that was excellent. And that's all I have for now. There's an issue that I'll discuss with Hosway regarding marketing of the remainder of that. But I just want everyone to be sure what, what's changing at this juncture. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, let's go ahead and call the roll.
All right. Stokes?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And our final resolution is 2022-21. Let me just peek outside to see if somebody's here. So Judy, let's go ahead and read this one in full, please.
All right, this is approving the appointment of Paige Burge as chief of police. Whereas former chief of police Brian Carlson announced his retirement from Yellow Springs Police Department effective November 12, 2021. And whereas pursuant to Resolution 2021-57, Sergeant Paige Burge has served as interim chief since November 15, 2021, and has demonstrated outstanding leadership qualities and capabilities throughout her service. And whereas candidates for the chief position were interviewed by the village manager and the manager's police chief search committee, and then by village council. And the village manager solicited responses from all village residents and stakeholders who participated in the public forum or interview process, the results of which demonstrated significant support from a variety of stakeholders for Burge's hire. And whereas after conclusion of the search and interview process, the village manager herewith appoints Paige Burge to the permanent position of chief of police by means of the attached Exhibit A. Now therefore, council for the village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby resolves that, Section 1. The terms of appointment of Paige Burge as chief of police are hereby approved by village council pursuant to a contract negotiated with the village manager in form substantially similar to the attached Exhibit A. Section 2 of this resolution shall be in full force and affect upon its adoption.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right, great. Hosway, are you joining us in council chambers?
Yes, I am. I'm on my way.
All right. Yeah, it's very exciting because I actually, one of the first times in a while that we have people here. So yes, welcome. All right, so we're going to do another shift and shift into swearing in our new chief of police, which I'm very excited about, Paige Burge. So I'm going to hop down with a few others.
Hey.
Do you have a message? I know Mayor has a message.
Yes.
Okay.
Over there. Sure, I'm going to cut around this way. Sure.
Right. Do we all fit in the shot now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, it's official. According to, I'm going to take you all back to ninth grade civics class here for a minute.
Pam?
Yes.
Sorry, like one of your students, I'm not here, okay?
Oh.
Party vote? Count to council vote? Oh, countdown. Leave me there.
Oh, oh, oops. All right, I got so excited. All right, Judy.
I know, it's very exciting.
Judy, let's call the roll, please.
Let's do that thing. McQueen?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Krieger?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
All right. Whew. That was close. Judy, I'll talk to you later about your detention. According to the terms of our village charter, I just wanted to review with you that the village manager is the person who appoints and hires our police chief. Village council, village council then validates the hiring process and appointment and approves the contract as they just did by the nick of time with Resolution 2022-21. And since it is my duty to operate the mayor's court and protect the values under which it operates, I pay very close attention to the person selected to head up our police department. I've had many occasions and situations in which to observe Paige Burge. She joined our department three years ago and has just been a whirlwind ever since. I have faith in her to be a very, very effective leader. It's my pleasure to represent the judicial branch here tonight, along with the executive and legislative, to witness the swearing in of Paige Burge. So Hosway, back to you.
Actually, I'm going to pop in real quick. Represent that legislative branch. So first of all, I want to say, Paige, we were so impressed with your performance at the public forum. One of the most, one of the best interviews that council has had. And I've got to reiterate, the faith I have in a chief who will continue our progressive policies around village policing was a priority for all of council and I think the community. And I just, you know, watch out, community, you do not realize just how much Paige brings just in terms of knowledge and insight and articulation and a breadth of experience that really highlights that we're building a culture of innovation. You're part of that. And I know you probably have one of these, but I always like to make it official. So Paige, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm really excited that we're making this appointment. Paige has been a natural leader from the beginning, certainly since I joined the organization. And I'm sure you were, you were a natural leader prior to that. And we've gone through some pretty rough times. Losing Carlson was a major loss, also Sergeant Watson. And we've, we've lost Mark Charles, moved on. And so we've had a lot of transitions. And Paige has not only held it together, she's been able to create some efficiencies and shift some of the schedules around. And so really grateful, grateful for the work that you have done. In the, in the search recruitment process, Paige just stood out right through the middle of the process. We had a very, a very robust, thorough recruitment process. We were able to attract top-notch talent from across the country. The finalists were former chief of Mississippi. You know, great story. You have a great story. And, you know, looking at the feedback that we received, you came up as the, as the best option. So I'm really honored to be making this appointment. I'm honored to be working with you. And I'm grateful that your family is going to let us borrow you.
For a long time.
For a long time. Because, you know, this is, this really is a team effort. It's, it's not just you. We're also hiring your family, and I'm grateful. And now, you know, not hiring them in a contractual way before you start making placards, before you start think, doing public record requests. But in a way that, yeah, you come with your support system, as I come with my support system. And really, really does take a village and a team to get this done, get this work done. So thank you. And now, we'll administer the oath. Do you need the paper or just?
I do need a paper, yeah.
All right, there you go. All right. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
Observe the provisions of the charter.
And ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs.
And ordinances of the village of Yellow Springs.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of the office.
Of chief of police.
Chief of police.
So, Brian, do you mind a group picture? The news is going to...
Yes.
Just get over this one?
They saw her. Thank you.
You don't mind, Brian? I just have a couple words. Except for that.
Yep. Right there.
So, thank you to Hosway, of course, council, Mayor Pam, and of course, the community. I don't think that I can say it any better than the way I said it when I took the interim chief role, which was that this has been and will continue to be the professional honor of my life and privilege. Of course, thank you to my wife, my parents, who are here tonight to share this with me. So tonight for me, I'll keep it short and sweet. It's about humility, about remaining humble. And that's what I want to do, is just express my gratitude and my appreciation for the community, for the, everyone who participated and all of the countless hours spent in trying to find the right person for this role. I hope that I can meet and achieve the expectations that you have set forth for me. And of course, a big thank you to my team every day. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for each and every single one of them. So thank you. I appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. And actually, Paige, before you step out, council members, if you have any other comments, since I kind of jumped the gun, please share.
Hi, Brian, yeah, Kevin here. I'd like to say something. I don't know how often I've said this, but I just happened to be in attendance at Brian Carlson's last day, and that was when Paige was announced as the interim chief. And when she was given the floor to, to run her portion of the meeting, I was behind a partition. I couldn't see who was speaking. But when I heard Paige's voice, I was immediately impressed by the command authority that she carried in, in her demeanor. And I just decided, well, whoever that's speaking, I will follow them anywhere. And so Paige, I believe she's a naturally born leader, and I appreciate the fact that she talked about humility, because this is a service position ultimately. And we appreciate her attitude about that. And I look forward to an excellent career and excellent service here in the village. Thank you, and congratulations, Paige.
Thanks, Kevin. Lisa, Mary Ann, Carmen?
Thanks, Paige.
All right.
Congratulations. I wish I was there to shake your hand. Congratulations, chief. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good to see you. All right, take care. All right. Okay. So we are now moving into citizen concerns. This is the time on the agenda where we accept comments about anything that's not an agenda item. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and Judy will time those comments
We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, and Judy will time those comments. And I see Athena's hand up. So Athena, if you wanna go ahead and, mic on?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. So my comment is related to the procurement of public records from Yellow Springs. Again, I don't know why I have to have problems with you guys every single time or most times that I contact you. Here's the thing, I'm not gonna talk about the contents of the records, I'm gonna talk about the process. During the process, I was told that, because I wanted the records digitally, that only one person could handle the burning of the DVDs, and it would be too much time for them to email me these digitally. And so I was told that the person, I'm gonna make this big so I can see, so I can quote, "The only, Paige's only public record specialist can redact, review, and release instead copied footage." I asked for that name directly three times, and what I got from Judy was, finally, the record specialist's identity is not necessary for you to have, since all records must go through the clerk of council. First of all, people always tell me to come to you guys directly. This is why I don't. Second, I put a public records request in so I could see this person's name and so I could figure out why I won't be told. Turns out, when I asked for payroll records, I was told that I can't be given this person's direct payroll records. I would be given a generic payroll record, because that position function is not in your employment description. That is the most absurd thing I have ever heard for public records. What that means is, if somebody performs a job function and you don't write it down, you don't have to give me information. Now, it is possible that the Sunshine Manual laws have changed from what I'm about to say, and not only went from not saying you aren't obligated, which I believe you are, but to prohibiting you from releasing it. Sorry. But if that has not happened, the law is very clear. If you have enough information to identify those records, you provide them. You know who the public record specialist is, you can tell the payroll person and they can provide it. The second set of things I requested that would identify this specialist was a bunch of emails. What I was told, and I'm very unclear on, is that they would come to me redacted from between the PD, the solicitor, and the village clerk. I asked for all emails from this person. Those emails will identify who this person is. I wasn't given any idea whether I would give that, and that would have to wait a whole week. Third, and I'm just looking through my notes so I can get through this really quickly. I requested that the CCTV be delivered digitally, and I was denied because it was too big. I personally tested that with my email address, emailed them to myself, downloaded them, and made them work, even with a required player. That is not impossible. It requires a digital container. Here's what I was told, that the public records law does not require you to put information, public information online, the way it does not, in my estimation, prevent you from sending things digitally. It's a Venn diagram, but not a circle. I am not.
Just three minutes?
I have one more thing I want to say.
Okay, quickly, please.
CCTV footage, that stuff is crap. But second, I am asking you directly, right now, who is the public record specialist I'm identifying, and why will you not tell me? That's my last comment.
Okay. Thanks for that feedback, Athena. I don't know. Breann, Judy, is this something to handle after the meeting or? Yep, okay. So we will follow up with you about that. And, let's see, I see Kat Walter. Kat?
Hi. I'm returning to council to make a very strong plea for a stop sign at King and Fairfield Pike. I'm here in support of our neighbors, the Levex, who wrote a letter for the same. I understand there are challenges with putting up a stop sign for fear that there might be accidents, which attest to the fact that it's a very, very dangerous area for speeding that is only getting worse with more traffic. We have young children, we walk on the road regularly, we do not have sidewalks, and it's just extremely dangerous. So we're in the process of collecting signatures for a petition that lays out more explicitly than we did before, 10 months ago when we appeared, that requests additional warnings outside of the village as people are coming into it to slow down to 35 miles per hour, so that they're not going from 50 or whatever immediately to 25. There, there are ways to do this, that I'm sure many municipalities have figured out in the past. So I would love to hear your feedback on that and to see some sort of action in the near future. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kat. And we did add that to the agenda technically, or at least to elaborate on, on that during the managers' report. So we will be discussing that at the end of the meeting. And, but I think it was fine for you to comment now, in case you can't stay till the end. So we will be discussing that and appreciate your feedback. All right. Dorothy Bouquet, I see.
Hi, thank you for giving me a minute here. I wanted to ask Hosway if it was gonna be in your managers' report to talk about the wastewater monitoring and what the next step was on that.
Yes, I will cover that in my managers' report.
Perfect, okay. That's it?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you, Dorothy, for bringing that to our attention. All right, are there any other citizen concerns? I am not seeing any. So we'll move to.
Brian, I've got Catherine Price.
Oh, Catherine Price?
See, can you hear me now?
We can.
I never know how to get stuff going. I'll make this nice and easy, because everybody's so darn happy tonight at your council meeting. I'd like to say that there's good news that, about the development of, of Wright Street Development, that was just, that land that was just sold. And I spoke with someone at the news who confirmed with the, someone at DDC management who said that there's a possibility that he would sell individual lots. He usually sells to Ryan Homes. And I, I just think it would just be a windfall if, if we could get together some smart sub-developers in this town who would put in a few little Thistle Creek areas and some nice things that would really fit Yellow Springs. There wouldn't have to be any arguing, it would just be, if they could buy a plot of individual lots and make something nice, it would solve so many problems. And I'm just really hoping that, as a village, we can maybe even individually inquire from the DDC management and just express our wishes. If there's any kind of support we can give towards that, I think it would just go a long way. And I, I just, I'd like, I think it would be a win-win situation. And so I'd just like people in the village to know that there's this possibility out there, and we can start thinking about how to go about it. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Catherine. And I agree, that would be exciting news. So thanks for highlighting that. And I see Max Chrome raised his hand.
Thanks, Brian. I just wanna reiterate what Kathy said. I, I think if there's anything that the village council or village staff can do to encourage individual development of those lots on Wright Street, that we would end up with a result that is much more village-like. So I just wanna encourage you all to do that. Thanks.
Thank you, Max. And, yeah. I definitely think that that is something that we're focused on. And, yeah, that would be great. So appreciate you guys both highlighting those opportunities. It kinda ties into some of the things that we'll talk about a little bit later relating to some hopes around zoning policy. So thanks a lot. All right, I'm not seeing any more hands, so let's move to.
Brian, Dino just raised a hand.
Okay. Yeah, Dino, go ahead.
Hey, I just wanna talk about in-person meetings again, if we can get off of Zoom so we could see you guys, you could see us. I think it'll be better for all of us, and hope you would push forward on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Dino. Yeah, that has my support as well, and we are gonna talk about that tonight, because, yeah, I agree, in-person makes all the difference. Thank you. Okay, and I see Sarah. Sarah, go ahead.
Yes, I also just wanna mention it's more than pastime that you go in-person, and also encourage you to look at your policies again concerning public involvement and transparency and allowing the citizens to be part of the decision-making process in all stages of the decisions, not just at the end. That's government, it's not business.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Appreciate both those comments. And, yeah, we wanna continue to push the, the envelope on transparency. Appreciate that. Okay. All right. So why don't we move to special reports? And I believe we have our finance director, Matt Dillon, to talk about our ending financials. So Matt?
All right. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. Let me know if everyone can see. Looks like the title screen with the village title and your fun report summary. Yes. Perfect, perfect. Well, we began the year 2021 with $9,850,812. We took in $13,028,511. Total expenses were $12,782,600, which left remaining cash at year-end of $10,97,602. This is a total, all funds net cash gain of $246,790. I'm sharing what is page 45 of your, your council packet. It is our all-funds financial summary. And I just wanna point out that the, as a cash basis, we actually were able to gain close to $250,000 over the course of 2021. We also have net encumbrances still holding over the year as of January of $981,546. So I just wanna, wanna point out, those are the, the big numbers to take from this, this first portion of the summary. The second half, really, of the page here that I'm alluding to with the graphs, really speaks to us exceeding our revenue goals. We were able to take in, excuse me, meet our revenue goals. We were actually able to capture 99.97% of revenue projections for, across all funds, just exceeding $13 million. And from an expense standpoint, we actually have a, a lot of good takeaways on the expense side, in that we, we did come in under our budget, and after encumbrances, we were able to return over 9% back in savings for the, to the, to the budgeted figures for 2021. So that's, that's actually an amount of $1,367,000 across all funds that was returned. There's a lot more detail on the, the expense analysis. We'll show ups and downs by fund, but the net impact to all funds is $1.3 million returned. And the bottom portion of this, excuse me, the summary report is a bank report. And this, this shows, excuse me, where, where our cash is physically held, as far as what, what financial institutions. And this will actually illustrate our cash gain over the course of 2021 as well. And in addition to the, the financial summary, I also wanted to give an update on the utility roundup program. This is actually page 100 of your packet, which I'll go to now. And let me scroll down just a little bit here. What I wanna illustrate with this really summary screen here of the utility roundup program is that there was an increase in funds from, into the program, in that we started the year of January 2021 with $10,000, $10,207. And over the course of the year, and we're able to increase that by $7,000 to $17,880.36. And lastly, I just wanted to give a quick snapshot of the commissions budget for council commissions and where spending is. When I produced this report, there, there was actually another encumbrance that I wanna mention that, to add to what you see as the, the status update here for council commissions, in that there was about $15,000 put into this budget for a CRB program. So this figure here, this $39,000 that was just encumbered remaining, does include about $15,000, which we authorized through a council motion to add to the budget. So we're, all in all, we're talking about $24,000 approximately remaining in council commissions. And the expenses to date are shown below the three expenses. I will say there's a typo on the first expense detail, and that is actually the arts and culture banner for the human, or excuse me, the women's right, reproductive rights, which you'll see in the near future. But again, total spending for council commissions is roughly $1,800, and $1,818 for 2021, or 2022 year-to-date, excuse me. And that's, that concludes my summary.
All right, thanks, Matt. And so we do have $12,500 encumbered, is that correct, for, between the Public Arts and Culture Commission and the Environmental Commission?
Brian, I actually have not, I was, I think we really should spend some time just talking about the process for the council commissions expenditure request, 'cause I, I wasn't at the last meeting, and I wasn't, I didn't receive that, but I am able to encumber those funds.
Okay.
So I think we'll just clarify like how the, how I get submissions, and I'll make sure to encumber those funds as soon as I can.
Okay, sounds good. All right, questions or comments from council members?
Yes, I have a question.
Yep.
I don't under, given that we brought in more money than we received, why does it show on the, that page 45, end-of-year summary, that our ending balance was smaller than our beginning balance?
That's actually, I could easily explain that. So the, the numbers that I was hoping to point out are, are actually a reflection, including in comferences. So at any given point of the year that we've carried about $980,000 in encumbrances, of which are financial obligations that we plan to spend, but haven't received an invoice and expensed or paid out by check. So on a cash basis, we did take in more than we spent to the tune of approximately $250,000. But as far as carrying forward of encumbrances, it was that savings or cause of earnings figures is reduced by the encumbrances that we still hold. So for instance, if there's a service that we've gone into, but we haven't received a bill yet for it, or we have a service that we received and, and the company just has had yet again to invoice us. I mean, that's mostly the reason for encumbrances.
Matt? This is Kevin. I have a question about the summary page. And I imagine it, I'm guessing the answer might be prior year encumbrances. But, so first of all, kudos for being under budget on your expenses, but can you explain why January began, why the year began with us over our expenses?
Okay, so to, to explain how the, how the chart works here, what would you see as a, a budget smoothing line? So if this projects that we expend the same amount per, per month.
Right.
But moving into January, it looks like, well, what you see here is I, I paid more of, more year, more of the year's bills in advance. So I, I may have a, a software program that I, I go ahead and authorize funds for, that authorized the whole year worth of payment. So you'll see a whole year's worth of payment come out at different times when this is due. So the actuals are, are your blue solid lines here. So you see some, some. So you see some variations to that. But from a smoothing standpoint, just to show a straight line for staying underneath that budget. The real take-home is that I end the year underneath that line.
Gotcha, gotcha. Appreciate that. And once again, kudos for getting us to where we are. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? So I guess, Matt, I did want to ask about the utility roundup. So it's nice that we have a healthy and growing balance. But my question is, what are the reasons that we're not allocating more of those funds?
Brian, there's some internal discussions regarding the qualifications for getting or awarding a roundup, such as, you know, as far as frequency of time someone can apply or the amount that can be awarded. So that, what we're seeing here is a growth in the fund, which is great that people are contributing. But us finding that maybe the needs are concentrated in less individuals than we might have thought at first. So instead of, you know, having a cap that hits a larger number of people, maybe the solution, you know, to hit more, to make a bigger impact, is to target less people with a higher amount. So those are some of the conversations that really need to be had in that we reach our, you know, our most needed people with these utility roundup funds.
Okay, well, yeah, I'd love to continue that conversation then, potentially at the next meeting. So, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I actually have a comment. I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out the reason. So hypothetically speaking, someone needed some of those funds in order to continue utility service with the Village. Are the criteria, you know, are there criteria online? The criteria need to be met? Is it a financial thing? Is it, you know, how do we determine who gets those funds? Does that make sense?
Yeah, there is a predetermined criteria. I'm not as well-versed to just rattle off like all the qualifications. But that is a thing that I believe we're able to share with council. I don't want to miss which on the spot, but.
Gotcha.
And those are just, you know, preliminary discussions on, you know, really, I don't think anyone's goal is to hold these funds in any way. We want to get them into the most, into the hands of the people that need those funds. So growth isn't necessarily a good thing when it comes to, you know, spending is using the funds in the way that they're designed. So, yeah, those are certainly conversations, I think, that we could solve some of this through just a change in a little bit of who would qualify and how much would be awarded.
So to follow up on that, how would a community member go about applying for the funds?
We have an application, I believe, that's downstairs. There you go. Well, this was sharing something from the website. But I believe we have printed copies out in front of the utility billing office for them to fill out. And there's, I'm not sure, I think it's just, it's usually a pretty quick turnaround.
Sure.
But, you know.
There are applications online as well.
Okay.
Seek out these funds. And there's, from my standpoint, there's, I mean, this is a great community as far as those looking out for each other. And this is just, you know, a really good example of that.
And Matt, I assume that our team members in the utility department would also let people know if they were having trouble with their utility bills about the program?
Absolutely. You know, I would encourage you and anyone to be open about like maybe their issues with paying the bills. I know, so it's our consistently discussed with those over the phone in attempts to collect. We'll make sure to let them know as well.
Yeah, oh yeah, Florence. All right, well, good. Well, I think I like the idea of revisiting our policy because I feel like we established the utility roundup program over three years ago. And it's had some success and maybe it needs to be adjusted. So, okay. Any other questions for Matt? All right, Judy, should we be voting on these financials?
You should indeed, if you have a motion to approve.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the fourth quarter financials?
I move.
Second.
All right, and Judy, if you could call the roll, please?
Yes, Brown.
Yes.
Krieger.
Yeah.
McQueen?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Haush?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so we're now into old business. And I know that a lot of great work has been done on the citizen review board proposal. And so I want to thank Carmen and Lisa for keeping this moving forward. And I'm going to turn this one over to Carmen and Lisa.
Okay, I guess I'll start. Is that all right with you, Lisa?
Yes, please. The legal review is at the top of the document.
So Attorney John Waddy is out of Columbus. He'll be submitting the appropriate documentation to enter into contract with the Village in order to research and view the CRB proposal to ensure that it complies or committed to the miseries with ORC regarding regulations for oversight of police department personnel. And then it falls in line with the Village Charter and codified ordinances. This is something that, these are questions that a Village manager had, regarding oversight and management of grievances and disciplinary procedures of employees and police department personnel. I would like to add that citizens review boards or citizens oversight boards do not dole out discipline. Only the courts can do that. So that's something that's kind of important to highlight there. So I did speak with Sarah Wallace, and I think it was March 8th. And we talked about, you know, possible support from the Village mediation program coordinator to assist with intake and responsibilities for the CRB. What I shared with her is that the Village mediation program is an established program that is very, very important to our community. It's very valuable for our community members. I've used it. I've had, you know, friends who've used that Village mediation program to get help settling differences. And my thought was that, you know, we, well, VMP shouldn't wait to pursue finding someone for that position to see if possibly that person could have like a dual role. So we agreed that VMP would, you know, carry on with trying to find someone for their position, for what they need, because they are already established. And then later on, you know, whoever is chosen, the coordinator could, you know, be made aware that there would be kind of dual responsibilities or dual roles for intake. Lisa, you want to take this one?
You're on mute, Lisa.
Unless you want to stop and have discussion of the first two specific to the legal review. I want to circle back on discussions that occurred at the last meeting about the source of funding for the legal review. I feel strongly that there are several different budget lines related to cost of legal. This is a legal cost. And I think the money to cover this legal review should come from a legal budget line. And I don't, I know that there, the council went back and forth about whether they wanted to pre-approve something. So I don't know how you feel about that. So should we stop and take any discussion about the legal review or the coordinator support before we go on to our meeting with the chief and the interaction survey?
Yeah, that sounds good. So council questions or comments around what's been brought up so far?
Regarding the, where the money comes from, what, Lisa, did you have some pocket of legal money in the budget that you were suggesting it come from?
Well, I would defer to Matt, but I've spoken to him previously. There is a police-related legal fund. There are several legal funds. So I don't right this very minute, can't list them all, but I bet either Matt or Hosway could identify one of the several legal funds that might be leveraged.
All right, Marianne, do you want to, did you want to drill down on what the possibilities are now?
Well, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. It's just that there's no, unless there's a general legal fund somewhere, then it would have to come from, I guess, the police or administration or both or something.
All right, well, is Matt still on?
Yes, Brian.
All right, Matt, so do you have concerns about where the funding comes from? I guess we're, it sounds like we're talking in the ballpark of 5,000, so.
Well, sure, I would need to know where the funds are going to come from, absolutely. To clarify Lisa's point, like she was, what she was getting at was there are legal services, budgeted line items, which are not, are above and beyond what a PO for the solicitor costs. So we have unobligated budgeted funds that arise throughout the years operating as a village that just aren't encumbered through a current PO. So these are outside the solicitor PO for legal services. We do have various legal expenses outside that general solicitor PO that we cover with those funds.
Is there a place, Matt, that you recommend we take this money from?
Sure, that's something I could, I mean, it's just really, we just need to name the right place. There, the motion that was put together for the CRB budget did go to professional services for council commissions. So that's for consistency, I would think that would be the place for it.
What I'm trying to avoid is we have a very small amount of money, $15,000 allocated for the CRB. And I am trying to figure out if this cost can come out of an earmarked legal fund rather than out of that $15,000 that I would much rather use for operations.
Okay.
If I may weigh in, just to make it easier.
Hosway, yeah.
If you want it out of the police department, just say you want it out of the police department. We'll pull it from the police department. I'm looking at the budget right now. I've got $7,000 in that legal services line item.
Well, I don't know how much is in other legal funds. So I would like to hear a recommendation about what legal funds would best be used for this money.
This is Kevin. Hosway, the $7,000, was that the totality of multiple lines? Or there's one?
Yes, just in the police department budget, we have $7,300. Those funds will be set aside for like the recent investigation that we had, that one. The recent investigation was able to be done by the sheriff's office and no cost to us. So things like that that come up throughout the year. So we have $7,300. If we're looking for it as a $5,000 expense, I would, to expedite the activity here, I would say, I would recommend take it out of the police department. If we have a legal expense down the road where we need additional funds in this category, we'll deal with things as they come.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Other questions or comments at this point?
If not, I can continue.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
All right, and thank you, team, for that. I really appreciate your expertise in the funds. That's good questions from council. On March 14th, Carmen and I met with now chief Paige. And this was the first time that we met with her. So we were really focused on the history of the CRB. And she had read the proposal. And she had also done research on some other communities as well as Carmen, who really brings significant expertise and research and inquiry into these kinds of groups. So I was very appreciative of the level of conversation. I thought it was interesting that the chief identified a smallish town with a functioning CRB. As you know, that's been one of the challenges that we've had all along, is that small towns just don't do this. And she has reached out or is reaching out to the chief there to talk about lessons learned. We also talked about survey efforts. And the chief had some specific ideas that we really resonated with us and we appreciated her support. So, you know, moving into the interaction survey, you all may remember that a significant amount of work that was done last year to develop a QR code aided survey about interaction. And the current survey is worded towards police interactions. And per a conversation with Hosway, the whole process has been developed and it's really ready to launch. And I think we stopped because of some, just not being sure exactly how to monitor and enforce it. And then there was changeover with the chief. So two things that I want to say. One is that the chief suggested that it would be helpful if we first did a community-wide survey of interactions and perceptions to establish a baseline. That people who, even, I don't even want to put even, but whether or not you've had an interaction with a police officer, you still may have a perspective about policing in Yellow Springs. And she is very interested in hearing those perspectives. And I think that's a great idea, not instead of these other kinds of surveys, but then in addition. The other thing that I want to recommend, and this is really Hosway's idea from the get-go, is that the interaction survey should be launched to capture community input about any and all Village employees, not just officers. And so we would have to work on a modified survey that's not geared at a police encounter. And I would be glad to work on that. I'm sure Carmen would. And with input from Village team members to create that survey that would be linked to other QR codes for different team members. So that's the update on surveys. So you see the action requests from council.
Lisa, Kevin here. Sorry to interrupt. I just think this was a good time. You mentioned surveys and interactions. We did mention this letter that's in the packet in the communications at the beginning of the meeting. But Paige, Chief Burge, submitted a letter of thanks or joy from a citizen. They had locked themselves out of the hotel, so they're probably not a resident. But I just wanted to advise that, as I have in the past. But I just wanted to, uh, advise that, that as I have in the past, talked about the positive things that the police force does, that we want to highlight those. So I just want to, uh, just remind everyone that, uh, there is a very, very positive letter about Corporal Beam and his performance in the, in the packet. So, you know, we are doing good things. I know when we talk about interactions, it's usually leaning towards the negative. You know, but there's a lot of positive things that our police do. And again, I just want to highlight that. Thank you very much for letting allow me to interrupt.
Thanks, Kevin. And I, I agree, and not just positive things about our officers, but also positive things about other team members. You know, I mean, I, I, and, um, Carmen and I have talked about the importance of, you know, of amplifying voices of, of hearing this input. It's not about being punitive, it's about listening. And that's our job, listening. So that's what this is about. Um, so going to this action request from council, um, approved moving forward with legal review. There, there, Lisa, I still haven't seen a defined question set, but I know that Carmen has been collecting questions from a number of stakeholders, uh, in the village and external to the village. So maybe we're still not to the point of this approval. If we don't have a quick.
Really quickly.
Go ahead.
I, I, you know, requested, uh, questions from 360, members of 365 and, um, Human and other, you know, other people who, who have a, a say in this. And really the general consensus is that they're ready, like, you know. So we'll have questions and maybe when questions come up, then, then we'll ask them then. But the general consensus, like I said, is let's go, let's do, let's start. And then as questions come up, we will ask them. And, you know, I think that for, you know, I'm speaking from, you know, feedback that I've gotten and it is, let's start. Let's begin. And then when questions come up, we'll ask them then. And there, you know, nothing's really, you know, it's, from what I, from what I gather, it's kind of, you know, what is this person's expertise? What is this person's, uh, you know, what's their dossier? What's their, you know, what's the lawyer's, you know, uh, it's more, it's like personal stuff like that. Doesn't have anything to do with like the actual CRB.
Thanks, Carmen. So this is what I want to avoid. I want to avoid wasting money again, like we did before with a closed system and a lack of clarity about what we were looking for. And I want to avoid getting the results and then having anybody here say, and a critical element or a critical question was not asked and as a result, we don't have what we need. That's what I want to avoid. I want to make sure that we ask all the questions that the decision makers in this room need to get answers to.
Sure. And we have questions from, uh, from village manager. And I haven't gotten any, any other feedback from any other council members regarding, uh, questions. And as far as community members go, um, like I said, they just want to start. And if I'm wrong, I'm sure I'll hear about it. But the general consensus is, is that they just want to start.
Yeah, I'll just.
For me, it would be helpful to have a collated set of questions, um, go out to the village manager, the clerk and the council members one last time before we send them to the attorney, just to be certain that the council and the village manager and Judy and Briann, that any questions they have are being asked.
Sure.
One last time before we send it out.
That makes sense.
Yeah. And one thing I was, I was going to say is I appreciate in the write-up, the focus on what's viable under the ORC. I mean, I think that, you know, that right there is a really important focus that I'm not sure that we made clear the last time. And then I, I like what I'm hearing around, you know, let's put together, you know, what that review is going to look like. Carmen, I wanted to clarify with Wadi, the documentation that you referenced is, are they also thinking about how they would approach this or are they really waiting for us to give them the scope?
So as far as my understanding goes, is that Attorney Wadi is ready to begin and will submit the documentation needed for village manager to begin the, like, so proposal or contract, if you will. They reviewed the, the CRB proposal as it stands and will do, um, a little more in-depth research to ensure that it commiserates with Ohio revised code, village charter and policy personnel stuff that we have on our end.
Right.
So to answer your question, Brian, from my perspective, we are not asking to be taken to school again on the different options of a CRB, of how they might look. That work has been done extensively by the justice system task force. We then, um, you know, saw these additional choices. None of them were the sizes of our town. Um, lots of people have done a lot of research. So what we want this person to do is look at our proposal.
Yep. So, Mary Ann, did you have anything else you wanted to comment on?
I don't have any questions about the legal review. I just, uh, had submitted that one-page document suggesting we could start off incrementally by having calls coming into, once we have a coordinator, so that we could start seeing what kind of calls we would be getting even before we would have the training done and the board in place. But I don't have questions regarding the legal review.
Okay. So related to the action items then, so I think what I've heard is that, Lisa, you're recommending that something comes back, I guess, at the next meeting that has that clear scope. Oh, go ahead.
I do have a question. Um, if there's a collated set of, of questions, is there a way that Judy could send those out? Or would we have to, to council members and Briann and, and Hosway, um, just to ask, is there anything that needs to be added to this list of questions? Or do we have to wait another two weeks?
We could, I mean, we've, we've done that before. Um, so I think if, you know, if, if council approves moving forward, I think a, a process where we all see what that, you know, RFQ looks like or whatever we want to call it, I think that's possible.
That would be so great to not lose time. I, I mean, the RFQ is important and the question continuing to move forward is important.
Okay. I mean, as long as council gets to see it, I, I'm open to, uh, that being the process. I don't know how others feel, um, about, you know, doing it via email to confirm that as opposed to, uh, the next meeting. Kevin, Mary Ann, do you have any concerns about that?
No, this is, this is Kevin. I'm not having any concerns about, uh, you know, doing, doing the work that needs to be done via email. I think, I think the questions that, that, that Hosway put together, um, absolutely have to be answered. Contrary to what, uh, Lisa alluded to in our previous go-around where we, you know, learned about what could be. You know, we are a village in the state of Ohio. We have a charter and we have a policy map. This charter needs to be, or this proposal needs to be reviewed in light of those things. And I would, I would, you know, I've asked, uh, last meeting, I asked for, you know, some CVE or resume or something from the attorney. And then I would, uh, would ask Briann's opinion, um, you know, that, like, is, does it require, you know, a certain level of experience or a certain type of experience to even be able to, uh, wade into, you know, our municipal government, you know, charter and policy manual? Um, you know, is this just general lawyers are us or do we need somebody with municipal experience?
Someone with municipal and employment law experience.
Right. So that, those, those are, that is a point right there. You know, do you, that's a question. Do you have municipal and employment law experience? And, and again, I just think we, I, I don't know how we ended up with, with the, the first person. I presume he was qualified. He just didn't do what we expected. And I'd like for us to make every effort to avoid anything like what we've got previously.
Oh, really quickly, the general, like, and I'm, I'm going to kind of circle back to this. So Cincinnati, Columbus, Toledo and NAHL, so the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, all say that the solicitor or the lawyer of the city or town is the person that is to support and to ensure that any civilian oversight board committee, CRB, that, that, that they, that what their proposal is or what their plan is commiserates with their state, municipality, town, so on and so forth. If solicitor and if, um, city attorneys feel competent with that. So that's why we're having to go outside to find external counsel.
Carmen, can I, can I clarify that? Because Toledo, Columbus and Cincinnati all have municipal law teams that are employed by the cities. I am a contractor. I am one person. And because prior to you taking office as council member, I opine that because of the charter, the proposal as presented would divest me of responsibility and divest the village manager of responsibility and would therefore be in conflict with the charter. I would have a conflict with giving a legal review. Therefore, I opine that it should be done by outside counsel.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's not, that was.
Not that I'm incompetent, but that it should be done by neutral outside counsel.
Of course. And that, that is not, uh, that's not the point I'm making. I'm sorry that, that I wasn't clear.
Okay. Um, all right.
I also would like to, uh, understand if, uh, the council was comfortable with, uh, us continuing to work with Paige about her idea of a community perception survey and for us to continue to partner with Hosway to, um, continue working on the interaction survey or whatever we're going to call that. That should be like low-hanging fruit.
And, and both items should come through my office.
Right. So, I mean, I, I don't know. Well, let's talk about the, um, let's talk about those second two pieces first. Cause I think that might be easier to get consensus on moving forward. Um, yeah, go ahead, Hosway.
Matt, I want to, I want to add to, uh, Briann's remarks about, um, the in-house competency or the solicitor. You know, we, we did raise, raise some concerns early on and I think there, there was, um, some hesitation by the previous council body of that input that we were providing. We, we have leak, we have relationships with law firms that we work with. And I think there was just concern about the partners that we also work with in addition with our solicitor. And so we're, we're back at this conversation about council picking a particular lawyer to do this. Uh, the, the administration, we, we have relationships with village law official, Frost, Todd Brown, Brickler and Eckler. We have access to a lot of legal firms. Uh, I think the issue's been that there was a particular individual that, that was wanted, uh, to do this legal review.
Okay. Um, all right. So let's focus on, uh, survey action items. Are, are, do any council members, uh, have any, uh, opposition to those moving forward? Cause I agree with Lisa, those are low-hanging fruit. Um, okay. So I'm hearing, yeah, it seems like we've got consensus around that. Going back to, I guess, the first action item, some challenges I see are, um, that Kevin's mentioned the issue around just the credentials of who's being recommended. But I think that, you know, we are looking at a, a council decision on that. Um, you know, there, there is this outlying, uh, sort of finalizing what the RFQ or the questions are. And then I think there still seems to me to be a need to kind of confirm what amount we're asking for. So I feel like it might be a challenge to do that outside of a meeting. So I feel like we need to get that together and we need to finalize that part at the next meeting. But, um, but I'm, I'm open to, you know, pushback on that. It just seems like a lot of things to do via, you know, Judy sending emails to us individually. So.
I guess, I guess what I would feel comfortable motioning now is, um, pending input, uh, from the stakeholders I mentioned via email, I'm moved to, um, allocate, um, the amount of money, not to exceed $5,000 from the police, um, legal line item.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any discussion around that motion? Uh, okay. Then Judy, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Yes, Krieger.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you say Stokes?
I did. Stokes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry. McQueen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, uh, great. Yes, thank you. Great discussion, great work. Uh, yeah, Carmen and Lisa really appreciate, um, everything I saw in the packet. Thank you. Okay. Our other piece of old business, an important one, is talking about our plan for, uh, coming back in person. So I'm, uh, yeah, love to hear council members' thoughts, uh, on that.
I would like for us to meet in person. I think that, um, there's a lot we lose by meeting virtually. And, um, I, I request that we start meeting in person.
Okay. Uh, Kevin Stokes?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor in general of this meeting as long as all of us are in consensus regarding, you know, our own behavior. Everybody's comfortable being unmasked versus masked, you know, because I, you know, we, it's still optional. Masks are optional. And it, you know, it really is not that consequential. I imagine if one of us does want to remain masked, you, you stay masked until you have to speak and, and then you, we mask off. So in general, I'm, I'm in favor of, uh, moving in that direction.
Okay. Uh, Lisa?
I'm in favor of being in person so long as masks are, um, optional. And you can expect me to be wearing a mask.
Okay. Carmen?
I'm in favor of, um, meeting in person via, so I guess some of the thoughts I have behind it are, so all council members in person. And then can we open it up? And this, this is like the hybrid thing that I'm not really sure about. I know people who are not physically able to get to the meetings. So there's a accessibility issue. Um, and because it's inconvenient for us to maybe do a hybrid thing, I don't want that to be an excuse, um, you know, for, for folks that are non-ambulatory or don't have transportation to get in person. I'm not talking about, you know, council members. I'm talking about community members who, um, there would be a barrier to their attending meetings if there wasn't an online component. That make sense?
Yep. Um, okay. And I will say that I also agree, um, that we should go back to in-person and I advocate doing. and I advocate doing that for the next meeting. Breann, can you remind us of, based on the legislation we passed, it is still possible for a council member to attend remotely, right? Even if we have an in-person meeting?
Yes. The difficulty is any technology challenges you might have that would prevent the council member from attending remotely. And again, the state law has changed again to where we can allow that through the end of June. But if any aspect of our local ordinance gets challenged, it would revert to what's permitted under revised code, which would mean they could hear and participate in discussion, but they wouldn't necessarily be counted as present in person for voting. But I don't know of any legal challenges to remote meeting ordinances or the state law at this point.
Okay.
Just as a sidebar, I know we need to figure this out, but on the April 4th council meeting, I will be again unable to attend due to business travel with an evening commitment. So no matter what we decide, I won't be present at all.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa. And then just to clarify, Breann, pending a challenge, council member attending remotely can still participate and vote and all of that? Okay.
As your local ordinance, yes.
Okay. So then I do want to weigh in on, I agree with Carmen and maybe others around. I think it is important to continue the hybrid. And, you know, I watched last meeting. I know that there are different opinions about that. But when we temporarily did come back in person, we did do hybrid meetings. I understand it's not ideal. But I think some of the challenges around, you know, people that want to participate and making sure they have that opportunity, that could be flagged. You know, in other words, like it's, you know, if you want to make sure that you can participate via Zoom, then notifying the clerk ahead of the meeting, since it isn't always easy to be perfectly interactive in those formats. But I am of the position that we should continue to provide as many opportunities for citizen participation as possible. But again, I understand that there are some challenges and I think that, you know, as long as community members understand those challenges as well, we can figure that out. So I guess, any other thoughts about continuing a hybrid model would be good to talk about at this point?
I do think that we should consider some maximum room occupancy numbers or chambers. I don't know what the right answer for that is. But, you know, we certainly will have people who are not vaccinated and we don't want to put them at increased risk by being in a crowded, minimally ventilated space without a mask.
Okay.
So Lisa, are you imagining, excuse me, that if we have a limitation on our space, on the number of occupants in council chambers, you considering maybe A and B as overflow?
Exactly, exactly. I mean, people could come in when they want to talk and, you know, we could queue it up maybe or something like that.
Yep. And we did set it up like that before, so that, we could definitely do that. Any other thoughts?
Well, I was going to ask Hosway about the technical concerns for doing that kind of work at the Bryant Center.
There are two issues that we're coming from. And first, I've had several conversations with the team here. And we support both an in-person and a virtual option. The in-person, when we go back to in-person, we're going to change our format a little bit on who in my team is available to attend these council meetings. It's a lot of time out of the week, out of the month. And so I will bring in team members as needed for particular items. So we'll make that change when we go in-person. The hybrid option, we're not in support of the hybrid option. I think it's a lot to handle. Certainly, I like the virtual environment because I have access to a lot of technology from my desk. I have budgets, I have clerk base, I have our American legal. I have all these systems up and I can pull information and be able to share screens. I would lose some of that ability in an in-person, in an in-person meeting. There are some technology challenges. I think it's difficulty for me to run both, be listening to everything within the council chamber and also running an online platform. The virtual environment makes that much easier for me because I have all these screens on my desk and a very powerful computing power. So my team is very supportive of an in-person meeting with the adjustments, but we're not very supportive of the hybrid meeting.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I do. So, you know, kind of circling back to what I stated. I feel like, you know, if council members are comfortable meeting in person, then we can be in chambers in person. My concern is, you know, people who will not be able to make the meetings if they're not online. And I understand that that's, that's, you know, can be inconvenient. But, you know, are we able to make provisions? Are we able to make exceptions for people who physically cannot come to the building? You know? So that's, I mean, that's, I think that it's only fair that we have accessible meetings. I mean, it's not that it's only fair, it's right that we have accessible meetings to everyone who wants to participate.
What's the history before COVID, like in the old days? I mean, not really old, I mean, just before the plague hit. Was there any way that people were able to attend who weren't able to come to the building?
They would attend in person or submit letters or other forms of communication.
Right, they would, they would, they would attend, you know, or I'm sorry to interrupt, or submit letters or attend in person if they could physically get there. But we've advanced from that point. And I feel like, you know, we've made, we've made progress in order to make these things accessible to people.
Isn't the YouTube always going to be on?
I mean, yeah, we've had, we've had live streaming for a while, so. Okay, well, I think it's pretty clear that we all are ready to come back in person. So I think we just need to go around and I think we've had good discussion and council just needs to indicate whether we want to try some level of hybrid or not. And so I will say that I think we need to, we need to try some level of hybrid and maybe a little bit wonky, we may need to put some qualifications on it. But it also makes sense because we may have council members that need to attend sometimes virtually. So that's where I'm at. Carmen has said hybrid. Lisa, what are you thinking?
Hybrid.
Okay, Kevin?
Well, when I say hybrid, I mean that you already have the, well, yeah, to the degree that Channel 5 is there and also the YouTube channel. So I think the only addition would be how interactive that can be. You know, for folks who are sitting home watching either Channel 5 or YouTube, what can they do to interact with us? So, you know, hybrid is nice. Quite honestly, I'm comfortable with what we're doing right now. Truth be told, I can just keep on doing this to end the journey. Fair with Breann said. You know, but if the group is willing to move on and I'm sensitive to what Mary Ann says. But I think we need to be realistic about, you know, the numbers and people participating. You know, this has been, we've been rock stars since we've been on Zoom and it was not like that in-person. Maybe it'll change. You know, but I think the highest consistent number of citizen participation has been in these virtual meetings.
Okay. Mary Ann?
I would like us to go back to in-person meeting. I would like to do that. If being, if doing hybrid is too difficult for staff, then I'd like us to take the time to figure out how to do that. However, I think that being able to watch on Channel 5 and on YouTube and if there's some way that people can email questions to Judy, I don't know how easily that is done, but I think we are going to be more effective meeting in person.
Okay. And I think in-person, you know, is a definite. I heard three clear hybrids. And so what I will work on is I'll talk with Hosway and other key team members and we'll think about what's possible and make it a work in progress. But I think we can figure out some kind of balance. So, okay.
What about commissions?
Yeah, good question. So what are your thoughts, Lisa?
I'd kind of like to let the commission decide until the due date.
Okay. That works for me. Other thoughts?
I agree. I think we're going to start meeting in person.
Okay. But Mary Ann, you're okay with the commission deciding what works for them? Okay, Carmen, you good with that?
Yes, I think it should be up to the commissions.
Okay. Kevin, I see a nod.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Okay, I see Jessica has a question. Go ahead, Jessica.
Hi, I'm Jessica Thomas. I'm speaking as a private citizen. This is more of a comment than a question. And it's just, I would hope that whatever council decides about hybrid meetings, that they are consistent with their expectations for council members attending in-person and community members attending in-person. If we can make affordances for council members, we should be able to make affordances for community members.
Okay. Thanks, Jessica. Okay. Anything else that we need to discuss at this point? So I think we've got April 4th is going to be in-person. We're going to work out logistics on what hybrid means and how we kind of balance that. Anything else the folks want to comment on? Okay. Good discussion and it'll be nice to me less lonely here. All right, we're going to move into new business and we have two items. One of them is related to our rules and procedures. And Kevin, do you want to talk about this one?
Sure, glad to start it. So in the packet, excuse me, Judy has a proposal, modification to Yell Springs Council rules and procedures. And I'll make it a little bigger so I can read. And we've focused on two things. Number one, the use and the prevalence of social media and council persons' activity, if you will, on social media. So I'll just go ahead and read what's proposed in this, in this one paragraph. Council members are expected to adhere to the same values stated above, which are values, when engaging on social media. The only additional caveat is that elected officials should take care, to be clear, as to when they are commenting in their capacity as citizens and when comments are intended to reflect their view as an elected official. This caveat recognizes that there are times when public perception will assign the mantle of public official to the council member regardless of any disclaimer. So, you know, so that talks about how, you know, we as elected officials, whereas there are comments about, you know, free speech rights and whatnot, we're not suggesting that we're trying to curtail free speech. We just want to officially, if you will, you know, acknowledge, you know, that we are regular citizens at some point in our daily existence. And it's incumbent upon each individual council person to govern themselves accordingly. And it's very easy, you know, like that last paragraph said, it recognizes that there are times when public perception will assign the mantle of public official to the council member regardless of any disclaimer. And, but, but I think the point is we as council persons need to be, you know, more diligent, if you will, with respect to ensuring that our messages are clear. You know, it might just be wordsmithing, you know, but I'll hearken back to the recusals that I had to do for a recent housing-related discussion, that was before council. It's, yes, in my official capacity, you know, I was very clear whenever I was speaking from an official capacity and surely contribute those comments to my official office as the Ohio Ethics Commission did. So they advised me of that. Any other time I spoke, I was careful to say, you know, when I was speaking as a private citizen. And again, that's, whether that's the best example or not, you know, but this paragraph just begins that discussion to talk about, you know, how earnestly we need to govern ourselves, you know, when we're out there, you know, in public, physically or virtually. And again, just one of, we acknowledge that the public can treat us as public citizens when it is our intent to be private citizens. And we just need to be aware of the hazards there. So I can pause there. The next, the next paragraph deviates a bit and gets into a different discussion. But I'll pause there for comments, questions, and concerns.
Hey, do council members have any questions or comments on that piece? Okay. And then do you want to talk about the other process piece, Kevin?
Sure. And the next piece that's in the packet again is a proposed language for a process for addressing complaints against council members. So what this first does is acknowledge that officially there is no process. You know, whatever has been done to this point, up to this point, has been ad hoc, if you will. You know, council does have the right to govern itself to a very large degree. But in terms of this village council having a documented process for dealing with complaints, it doesn't exist. So I'll read this paragraph. All complaints made by citizens against any member of council will be conveyed to the clerk of council. She will direct complaints made against the president of council to the vice president of council and will address all other complaints to the president of council. The public official directed to manage the complaint has full authority to act at their discretion. In the case of a complaint made by another member of council, the process is directed as above with the added option that the public official handling the complaint has the latitude to bring a resolution of censure against the council member in question again at their discretion. Pausing for comments.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Any comments from council on the second process piece? Lisa?
I do.
Yep.
Yeah. I recommend that the process for addressing complaints against council members be edited to avoid gender language.
Yeah.
As we currently have a she, but we might not always.
Yep, good point.
They.
Yep.
And I also believe that we need to expand this policy in the case that there's a complaint against a council member. in the case that there's a complaint against a council member made by a member of the team of the village, not the council.
Okay. All right, I think that's a good recommendation. Anything else, Lisa? Got it?
Not at this time.
Okay. Carmen, Mary Ann, any comments? Okay. So in terms of protocol, Judy, I guess we would bring this back because it's an ordinance, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we've got recommendations from Lisa. Let's bring this back to the next meeting. And that will also allow for any additional discussion when we take an official vote on it. So I'm going to move us to the next topic if there aren't any other comments from council. Okay. Next topic is the request from Laura Curlis related to rescinding a resolution. Lisa, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I would. And it's related, actually, to my recommendation to expand the policy about complaints. Had we had a policy for complaints, this resolution would have been handled differently. And I believe in retrospect, given the timing, that it shouldn't be necessary to keep 202149 on our books. And so along with that recommendation to expand that policy, my motion would be absent a policy that we should rescind Resolution 202149.
Okay. I'm going to say that I think there's a bigger issue here around revisiting resolutions with different configurations of council members that happened at a certain period in time. I think that what we should probably figure out amongst council is whether we want to make this an official agenda item for the next meeting. Because I think there would have to be more discussion around what brought the censure forward, which really, as you pointed out, Lisa, was about a toxic work environment for village team members. And so I guess, given that we are kind of past time, I would like to just get a sense for if a majority of council members want this to be an agenda item to discuss at the next meeting. So it sounds like Lisa does. Kevin?
Just to give it a full airing, if you will, yes, I'd like to discuss it. I am not inclined right now to consider removal or whatever the term is, maybe go away, just because I'm not sure what the rationale would be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
No.
All right, Carmen.
I think we need to revisit.
Okay. Carmen?
Yeah, I think that it's worth discussing further, absolutely, and putting it on agenda.
Okay. And I'm going to say that I don't think we should revisit it. But I definitely heard clearly from Carmen and Lisa to put it on the agenda. And so Kevin, you are saying that you're a third vote to put it on the next agenda?
Reluctantly, yes.
All right. So then that is what we will do. Okay. Let's move to the manager's report and...
Brian, on that topic, I would hate to relitigate or bring up issues of hostile work environment. But I will perhaps resubmit some of the concerns and complaints that I've heard from staff that contributed to a hostile work environment on this particular matter.
And I will remind you, Chris Kennard sat in on that meeting to give council guidance.
Say that again, Brienne.
Chris Kennard, he had council guidance on that resolution, not me.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, I mean, it's going to, I think, dredge up a lot of issues that, again, I don't think we should re-discuss. But yeah, but we will. Okay. All right. So Hosway, let's go ahead and go to the manager's report.
All right. Being sensitive to time, I'm going to hit the high priority items. I know a few folks have been waiting around on the wastewater treatment request. You know, we have an amazing team here. We've got amazing relationships. We looked at several different programs, and we've managed to get ourselves into the national wastewater monitoring system. So we're partnering with Ohio State, the U.S. EPA, and the U.S. Department of Health, and the State Department of Health. And we will be participating in the wastewater monitoring program starting March 28th. And I also want to manage expectations that there may be little things that we could act on as our water system tests positive. So just managing expectation. If there's somehow an expectation that we could immediately put on, reactivate masks or other policies, it will be challenging to do so. I think council would need to revisit the ordinances. But beginning March 28th, we will begin the COVID monitoring of our wastewater treatment facility.
Okay.
So that's, any questions on that?
What is the cost?
No cost to us, except for we have to incur the labor cost of taking an additional test, prepping the paperwork, and keeping certain measures for those particular tests. We have to measure pH and a few other elements in the water. There isn't a cash outflow, but we're looking at up to two hours for each test. And we'll be doing two tests a week. So we'll have to allocate four hours of work during the week to get those additional tests. So the grass may grow taller during that period, or there may be other things that would have to be delayed for those four hours a week.
Okay. Yep. Anything else, Hosway?
So that's on the wastewater treatment facility. The next topic that I got received here from Mary Ann is the stop sign at Fairfield and King Street. We've evaluated data, and I don't know if Paige is on. She could talk about the data. But we looked at data, and yes, there is some speeding since we've put the new speedometer at that site. And we've seen very little speeders that would justify a citation. But we have enough low-level speeding that would justify a stop sign. But it has to be a particular stop sign. It has to be a stop sign that has a warning indicator, so flashing beacons. And we would have to put signage further out into the township. And we'll have to work with the township to properly place that signage in the township. So we've looked at several options. At this point, we are at the position where we need to evaluate cost. And that's what the team is working on, evaluating cost. This is an unbudgeted activity, and we will need to budget it. We'll see if we can absorb the cost from our current budget. Otherwise, we'll come back to council for a supplemental for the three-way stop signage with flashing beacons.
Okay. And it seems like council is supportive of working on this and moving it forward. Is there anyone that's not? Okay. Thanks, Hosway. Any other items you want to highlight?
Sure, I've got the health insurance renewal. I met with the team today. We've got all the renewal proposals. Actually, we only have one renewal proposal from our current provider, Athan, for an 8% increase. We went out to the market to five different providers. We have a high health risk profile, and they refused to quote us on a price. So we are proposing to retain our current insurance plan with a 2% increase to our health premiums and a 6% increase to our dental plan. Our vision rate, last year, we signed a two-year rate hole. So our vision plan will remain the same. So I would like to bring that back. April 4th meeting, I won't be at a council meeting. I'm taking some vacation time, much-needed vacation time. So I'll be out through the 4th, from the 4th through the 11th. But I can submit that to council for consideration, and Matt can sit in to represent that matter. So that's on the health insurance related to health. The month of April, we will have health and wellness activities. So we've got a survey out. We encourage residents to complete that survey. It would help our team plan future activities. We've gotten great feedback on the mammogram activities. We're also scheduling a health screening expo here at the village, not just for village staff, but also the downtown businesses. This would allow the downtown employees to get a health screening, have health consultations. And we're also offering a free $75 gift card. So Philip is going to be putting out the marketing and the advertising for that and how to register and sign up for a gift card and get a health screening. The other update, I know I'll provide one more since we're pressed for time now at 9:40. The Ordain Storm Reroute project, we've hit a bit of an obstacle on this project. The contractor hit bedrock along some of the sites that were laying down pipe. And that required, or this contractor required a change order that certainly exceeds all the budget that we have for this project. It almost doubled the cost of projects. So we are reevaluating our contract options and speaking with other vendors. And we hope to have positive news to council for either the 4th or the 2nd meeting in April.
All right. Okay.
One more thing that I would like to put on the radar for council. The improvements at Lawson Place are going well. We've got cabinets in place, flooring going in place. I gave Mary Ann a VIP tour last week, and I'm happy to provide VIP tours to all of council members so you can see the great work that is happening at Lawson Place. So what I'll need from you in the coming 30 to 45 days is we need to make a decision on a couple of things. One are the leasing guidelines for the apartments. Are we going to look to partner with Section 8 providers and designate the units as Section 8? Or have a first-come, first-served and will accept vouchers as the applicants apply? So that's one decision we need to make. The other one is, I had a conversation with Brian about social justice reform, and the "bend the box for housing" topic came up. So I think that that's a topic that merits a lot of conversation on what kind of policies we want to adopt around returning citizens and housing in the village. It could be limited to just Lawson Place apartment, or it could be village-wide. And I'm happy to follow up with Ellis Jacobs to see if April Law is working on anything around that topic. So just a few items, a little light.
Thanks, Hosway. Any questions from council members for Hosway? All right. Great. Board and commission reports. Any updates that anyone has on boards or commissions?
Regarding the Public Art and Culture Commission, I want to highlight a phone message that I received today. You know, we've got these protest banners that are up on the poles. And we had a complaint that one of the visuals on a banner actually looks like a menorah and was offensive. And so I just want to acknowledge that comment and say that we will definitely look at that particular banner. As people may recall, these are historic banners that people had from their history in protest where we did intake. So we'll look into that. And we have a new Women's Reproductive Rights banner that will be going up shortly. It's been produced.
Excellent. Thank you, Lisa. Anything else on boards and commissions? Okay. Then future agenda items. So we've definitely mentioned a few during this meeting. Anything else on future agenda items that folks want to highlight?
Yes, I have something. So I had brought this up maybe two council meetings ago. I've been meeting with about a half a dozen or so group of citizens who are really interested in making some changes to our zoning code to make it easier to build more diverse housing, infill housing in particular. And I would like to have a place on the agenda for our next meeting for a 10-minute presentation by probably Alex Melamond and Matt Ruska. And I've talked with Denise, and I've talked with Hosway, and I want to get back with both of them before our next council meeting. But this has been, we've been doing this for about six months almost, and I really want to bring this forward.
Okay.
Is 10 minutes really enough? Do you think it's more realistic to just budget more time?
I think 10 minutes for a report and five minutes for feedback.
Yeah, and Lisa, I've been in on a little bit of the conversation. I think the idea would be to kind of look at some of the most pressing items and get some movement going. But I think you're right that there'll be a lot more discussion, I think, around opportunities we have with updating our zoning code. So, all right.
This is just like an introduction so that council and the community can get an understanding of what we're talking about here.
And if I may add, it's really to queue up what would be a normal course of business that every 10 years to review the zoning code. We did the comprehensive land use plan, so it's natural to follow up with a full review of the zoning code so that we could bring the zoning code in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan that was developed. So in terms of timing, it's appropriate that we're looking at this 10 years after the zoning code was reviewed. And so my points to that presentation will be that this is a great activity to time it with frequency and for council to adopt it as a goal, dedicate a budget to it, and create a committee similar to what it did with the comprehensive land use plan.
Great.
And be prepared for a long-term project. If you recall, comprehensive land use plan was a year.
And the last zoning code was almost two years. It started in 2012 and concluded in 2013.
Yeah. It happened right before Mary Ann and I joined council. All right. Anything else related to future agenda items? So speaking of comprehensive land use plan, Brienne, could you put something in the packet that responds to, there seems to be this continued confusion around what the comprehensive land use plan is and isn't. And I think part of it is that we had an ordinance that brought forward the updated comp plan. But there continues to be a lot of, I guess, chatter around that meaning that it's something more than a plan. And so if I need to be more clear, we can talk about it offline. But I think we need to address that because it's been an ongoing confusion for folks.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, great meeting. Glad to be back. And thank you, everyone, for lots of good discussions. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. Have a great evening.
Good evening. Good night.
Everyone, have a good night.